Ms. Perazian and Mr. Aginian, can you hear us?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, I'll call to order the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority. May we have roll call for the council, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Present.
Brotman?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Devine?
Here.
And may we have the roll call for the Housing Authority?
Authority member Aginian?
Here.
Agajanian?
Present.
Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Perazian?
Here.
And Chair Kasakian?
Here.
Thank you. Next, please.
The agenda for the Tuesday, June 29th, 2021, Joint Public Meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was posted on June 22nd, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next.
Community Services in Parks Regarding Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Proposed Revised Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solution Grant, and Home Investment Partnership Act Programs. A. City Council Motion to Approve Revised Fiscal Year 2021-2022 CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plan. Authorize Submission of the Revised Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the city manager or designate to redirect access, cancel, or unused program funds under $50,000 from one project to another with Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee approval. B. Resolution of Appropriation to appropriate $27,912 in additional fiscal year 2021-2022 CDBG funds in the Fund 2010 to various programs and projects as recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee. And C would be Housing Authority Motion to Approve the Revised Fiscal Year 2021-2022 CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plan, and authorize submission of the Revised Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Chair Kasakian, members of the Housing Authority. I'm just going to go directly to Onik Bolanikian, our Community Services and Parks Director, to present this item for your consideration. He has a brief PowerPoint. Mr. Bolanikian?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, members of the Council, Housing Authority Chair Kasakian, members of the Housing Authority. Real quick, I have a brief presentation regarding our CDBG allocation for fiscal year 2021-2022. On February 25th, HUD released CDBG allocation totaling a little under 1.9 million. On February 26th and March 1st, the CDBG Advisory Committee met and made funding recommendations. On the 27th of April, we brought those recommendations to the City Council and Housing Authority to approve the annual action plan. And on May 13th, HUD issued a letter stating that we received additional funding in the amount of $27,912,000. So our final allocation for fiscal year 2021-2022 is a little over 1.9 million. The additional $27,000 is divided up between a percentage, 15% social service programs, and about 60% capital improvement projects. So out of the $27,000, $4,186 would go to public social services, $23,000 for CIP projects. Program administration, there wouldn't be any change. We didn't meet with the CDBG Advisory Committee last Monday, June 21st. We interviewed 14 agencies, and they allocated $299 to each agency that was funded in the initial allocation that we have received in February totaling $4,186. And for the CIP projects, they funded the additional funds in the amount of $23,726 to the YMCA Glendale First Floor All-Inclusive Locker Room Project. This YMCA project, the initial funding request was in the amount of $566,000. They were allocated a little over $300,000. The additional funds in the amount of $23,000 would increase it to about $330,000 for next year's annual allocation. Here's a summary of the funding plan. So next year, we'll be receiving $378,000 for administrative costs. This goes to staffing the CDBG program, social services in the amount of 15%, $288,000, and our CIP in the amount of $1.2 million. $854,000 out of the $1.2 will be going to community projects, and then $400,000 will be going to one city project, which is the Pacific Park restroom renovation down at Pacific Community Center. So staff is recommending City Council and the Housing Authority to approve the proposed revised fiscal year 2021-2022 CDBG ESG Home Action Annual Action Plan.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions from staff? I'm sorry. From my colleagues? Do we have any? No? Do we have any phone calls on this item?
No, Mayor, we don't have any callers.
We'd like to move the item.
All right.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
That's for council items?
Yes.
This is for council?
That's for the ESG. I would like to move for housing.
We have to take separate motions.
No, we are going to vote first, or do you? Can we make? No, we can't make motions.
Right, so items, it looks like items 1A and 1B are for the council, so that's a motion. We'll go for that one, then separately, a motion for the Housing Authority.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes.
May we have a Housing Authority motion?
Well, let's do it.
I would like to move the item for housing.
No, I'm sorry, we did move both 1A and 2A together.
Thank you, okay.
And now, Member Agajanian has made a motion for 1C.
C.
1C and 2B.
Yes.
2C. Correct?
Can we do 2C yet? There's a separate report, I think.
I'm sorry, was Mr. Agajanian's motion on the first item for 1A and 1B?
And yours is for, yeah.
I thought it was, but I didn't realize that it, items 2A and 2B were also council items. They had all been read into the record, correct?
Correct.
Yes. So just for clarity, it should probably be made, another motion should be made for items 2A and 2B for the council.
Okay.
Item 2A and 2?
B.
Okay. For the house.
For council. No, for council. We're still on council.
And Councilmember Najarian seconded it, so roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes.
Now, for housing, can we have one for 1? May we have a motion for 1C and 2C?
I would like to move the item for 1C.
Thank you. Yes.
Second. Authority member Aginian? Authority member Aginian?
Yes.
Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Perazian?
Yes.
And Chair Kasakian?
Yes.
What's next, please?
Next would be item number 2, Community Services in Parks Regarding Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan Substantial Amendment for Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solution Grant, and Home Investment Partnership Act related to CARES.
Yeah, yeah. I'm like, I'm going, what do we just do? Because there's a...
Item 2?
That's a separate item.
There's another separate item.
That's what I was asking. Sorry, my apologies. That's why I asked the question. Go ahead, Mr. Jimmy.
So do we need to redo those motions, right?
Let's have him read the items to the record, and then we can rescind them and then reapprove them. I apologize.
Item number 2, Community Services in Parks Regarding Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan Substantial Amendment for Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Home Investment Partnership Act related to CARES Act funding for ESG CV2 and CDBG CV3. A. City Council Motion Approving the Glendale Continuum of Care Board's Recommendation of the Final Funding allocations for the Emergency Solutions Grant Coronavirus Round 2 ESG-CV2 in the amount of $3,104,861, and the CDBG Advisory Committee's Recommendation for Funding allocations and recipients for the reprogram portion of the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Round 3, Coronavirus Aid Relief, and Economic Security Act of 2020, funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the city manager or designate to execute all agreements, amendments, certifications, and documents necessary to accept and implement the funding recommendations and authorizing submission of the fiscal year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan Substantial Amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. B would be Resolution of Appropriation to Reprogram $1,083,000 from the city programs to various community agencies as recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee. C would be Housing Authority Motion Approving the Glendale Continuum of Care Board's Recommendation of the Final Funding allocations for the Emergency Solutions Grant Coronavirus Round 2 in the amount of $3,104,861, and the CDBG Advisory Committee's Recommendation for Funding allocations and recipients for the reprogram portion of the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Round 3, Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act of 2020, funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the city manager or designate to execute all agreements, amendments, certifications, and documents necessary to accept and implement the funding recommendations and authorizing submission of the fiscal year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan Substantial Amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you.
So do we need motions to reconsider at this point? So I will move, Madam Mayor and Mr. Chair, I will move reconsideration of 2A and 1B for the city and 2C for housing.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
We take the council first.
Yeah, we have to do these.
Council, roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes.
Motion to reconsider for the housing item?
Move the item.
Second.
May we have a roll call?
Housing Authority Aginian?
Of course.
Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Perazian?
Yes.
And Chair Kasakian?
Yes.
Okay, now we can move on with the report. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Mayor Devine, members of the City Council, Housing Chair Kasakian, members of the Housing Authority. We'll go back to Mr. Bolanikian for one more presentation on this item.
Thank you. Mayor Devine, members of the Council, Housing Authority Chair Kasakian, members of the Housing Authority. Real quick, I do have a brief presentation on our additional CARES Act funding that we've received from the beginning of the pandemic and to, from the beginning of the pandemic till today. Our background...
Could you make it full screen?
Can you make it full screen?
Sure. I'm working on it. Having some technical difficulties with the mouse, but I'll get to it.
Great. Thank you. So background on the CARES Act with the ESG CV and CDBG CV. Our first round of ESG was in the amount of $569,000, and we received those funds last May, May of 2020. Those funds were allocated June of 2020. ESG CV Round 2 in the amount of $3,104,000. We received those funds back in October of 2020. CDBG CV1 Round 1 was in the amount of $1,175, which we received May of 2020. CDBG CV2 Round 2 went to the states. And Round 3, in the amount of $1,615,000, we received in September of 2020.
Excuse me.
Counselor member?
Are we supposed to view this presentation?
Pardon?
He can't see the screen, I guess.
We can't see the screen.
Housing Authority, let me try again, one more time to bring it back up.
Much better.
Okay.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
All right.
And Councilmember Agajanian has a question.
I can go back, yes.
Can you tell me about Round 3, no funding? What happened that there was no funding?
For CV Round, for the ESG Round 3 funding, they were, the cities were not entitled to funds. Their, the funds were given to the federal government, not federal government, the state government, and those funds are going to be used for homeless services through the other COCs, through the continuum of care. So the ESG CV Round 1 and Round 2 were direct allocations, and then Round 3 went to the states.
But we are not going to get anything from them?
As of now, we won't be receiving any funding through the state. Any? So the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, those funds will be eligible for homeless prevention, street outreach, emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, and additional homeless services that the city has taken on in relations to our, you know, shower program and our deployment of handwashing stations and restrooms throughout the city. The first round of ESG CARES Act, this was implemented and approved back in June of last year. $360,000 for the Glendale Care Hotel Program. This also included Project Room Key, which was a program that we worked with on with LA County and First to Serve, which was the homeless services nonprofit organization providing the 15 rooms for Glendale residents. And we also provided close to 35 rooms throughout, through various hotels in Glendale and in the LA area to unsheltered clients in Glendale. A total of 62 clients were placed in the Glendale CARES Hotel Program. We also deployed handwashing stations and restrooms throughout the city and worked with Showers of Hope, nonprofit organization, and provided portable showers. We spent $67,000 of the first round of CARES Act. And homeless prevention, we've allocated some funds for homeless prevention and administration in the amount of $56,942. Yes.
Yes, councilman?
Homeless prevention, what we do is homeless prevention.
Homeless prevention went to the nonprofit agencies such as Essentia and Catholic Charities. They paid for first month's rent, landlord incentive program, and last month's rent, security deposit.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. The ESG CV2 CARES Act, we had two rounds, we issued two rounds of proposals in November and December of 2020, and Round 2, February through March of 2021. We have seven community agencies that were awarded $2,326,000 to provide homeless services in Glendale. The next slide are the agencies that were allocated, $2,326,000. Adventist Health Glendale for navigating homelessness prevention and promoting stability. Essentia to expand their street outreach, shelter, support, and adding a housing navigator to the program. Catholic Charities for the Loaves and Fishes Program, which is their food pantry program and also their homeless prevention program. Family Promise of the Verdugos to expand their street outreach, rapid rehousing, and homeless prevention, which also includes rental assistance. Glendale Police Foundation, this is to expand the Glendale Police Department's homeless outreach program into the evening and weekend hours. YWCA for their domestic violence and emergency shelter program, and also for the Armenian Relief Society homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program. So just a summary of the programs that have been recommended. Street outreach in the amount of $543,000. Emergency shelter, which includes the Project Room Key, Glendale CARES Hotel Program, and the emergency shelter over at Essentia in the amount of $690,000. Rapid rehousing, $688,000. Homeless prevention for $683,000. Portable showers and ending gum for $94,000. And our HMIA system that we use in-house, the homeless management information system, in the amount of $100,000, and administering the ESG CV program in the amount of $305,000.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Bolanikian? And that goes back to the slide, the previous slide, the Armenian Relief Society of Western USA. Is that money going to the SIPON chapter?
No, this is going to the Armenian Relief Society on Glen Oaks. This is the regional.
Yes, that's the SIPON.
Yes, the regional, I'm sorry. Yes, the regional.
Great, okay.
They'll be conducting their rapid rehousing. They've received different funding sources through homeless services, let it be our heat program, our cash program, and their HHAP program through the state. So their homeless services have expanded, and they would like to use additional ESG funds for their homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program.
Good, good.
My apologies, I was confused with the home and SIPON chapter.
Oh, okay.
They're located on Burbank.
Oh, okay. Oh, SIPON, okay, gotcha.
My apologies.
That's okay.
Onto CDBG. So the CDBG CV Round 1 CARES Act in the amount of $1,175,000. We brought this program to council last May. We allocated $572,000 in emergency rental assistance. Our friends over at CDD have completed this program. The Small Business Grant Administration in the amount of $572,000. The final round of funding will be distributed within the next couple of months. And our Senior Nutritional Meals Program in the amount of $30,049,000. That would be completed within the next month. The CDBG Round 3 CARES Act, we did come to council in December to allocate $950,000 to the Education Connection and $608,000 for the medical point of dispensing MPOS. We were hoping we can use the $608,000 to operate an MPOS program. But after connecting with HUD, they had mentioned that the CDBG CARES Act funds needed to be used in lower income area. So the $608,000 would not be eligible for the medical point of dispensing since the vaccination clinic was at, held at the Glendale Community College. So staff would like to return the $608,000 and $474,000 for the Education Connection program, and allocate those funds. And we issued an RFP in the amount of $1,083,000 to nonprofit organizations to start or have programs that would tie back into preventing, preparing, and responding to coronavirus. And that would meet the national objectives, which would be for low and moderate income clients and residents in Glendale. So staff did issue an RFP in the amount of $1,083,000. We had 12 agencies respond and submit proposals in the amount of $1,273,000. We met and interviewed, the CDBG Advisory Committee met and interviewed last Monday, June 21st. And the next slide is the funding allocation, the recommended funding in the amount of $1,083,000. So we have the Armenian Bar Association for their pro bono legal services clinic in the amount of $75,000. We have AGBU responding to the negative effects on COVID-19. It's a youth mentorship program that they've been, they would like to implement in the amount of $70,000. Armenian Cultural Foundation supervised remote learning. They did change this program during their interview. They would like to implement a program for pandemic prevention and management and educating their members and the community on the importance of vaccinations and vaccination clinics and mobile vaccination sites. The Armenian Relief Society in the amount of $180,000 for COVID relief and their recovery program. This will include food pantry and wraparound services that they will provide through the various programs that they have. The Campbell Center Support Employment Program for their developing disabled participants. Catholic Charities, their Loaves and Fishes Food Pantry Program. Door of Hope for their enrichment, social, emotional support, and food assistance for survivors of domestic violence. Family Promise of the Verdugos have their, they have their, can't stop us from housing, paying for first and last month's rent for homeless individuals that are looking for housing. Glendale Community College Foundation for their employment program. We also have Glendale Youth Alliance for their employment program. Salvation Army for food pantry, and YWCA for their parenting and counseling past COVID, the COVID pandemic. So there are three new agencies recommended for funding, the Armenian Bar Association, the Campbell Center, and the Glendale Community College Foundation. We have two returning agencies, the Armenian General Beneficent Union and YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena. Services would provide legal services, food pantry program, and programs for survivors of domestic violence, youth programs, employment programs, and so on. So our funding plan for CV3, $57,000 will go to program and administration. $1,558,000 will go to public social services, one being the city project in the amount of $475,000, which is our Education Connection After School program. And the rest would go to community projects, 12 community projects, in the amount of $1,083,000. So staff is requesting City Council and the Housing Authority to approve funding recommendations in the amount of $3,100,000 for ESG and $1,830,000 for CDBG CARES Act funds, and then approve submission our substantial amendment to the 2019-2020 CDBG Annual Action Plan.
Thank you. There are any questions? Then I need a motion for item 2A and 1B. For council. And 1B?
2A and 2.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
I have one question, I'm sorry.
I have one question, I'm sorry. The, so the Glendale College Foundation is the fundraising arm of Glendale Community College. So are they an eligible agency to receive the funding as opposed to the college itself?
Mayor Devine, members of the council, Housing Authority Chair, Housing Authority Kasakian, members of the Housing Authority. Councilmember Najarian, yes, they're a nonprofit organization, and they meet the qualifications to be a CDBG-funded organization, and this program would be for their food pantry that they've been spending money on.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor, that's my only question.
Roll call, please, we have a motion.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes.
May we have a Housing Authority motion for 2C?
I would like to move the item.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Authority member Agajanian?
Yes.
Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Perazian?
Yes.
Perazian?
Yes.
And Cherkasakian?
Yes.
Next item?
Move to adjourn for council.
For council.
Second.
Motion to adjourn for housing?
To adjourn for housing.
Second.
Thank you.
We are adjourned at 4:13. Thank you very much.
Close.
Yes.
A full day.
Okay, we're going to move on to the June 29th Glendale City Council meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
President.
Brotman?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
And Mayor Devine?
Here.
Next, please.
Would be one closed session, 1A, Conference with Labor Negotiators. The city designated negotiators attending the closed session are Rubik Alanyan, Michael J. Garcia, Jillian Van Miden, Matt Doyle, John Tuktayen, Sylvia Lanzus, and Michelle Flynn. The names of the employees, organizations are Glendale City Employees Association, Glendale Management Association, and Glendale Firefighters Association, Unrepresented Employees, Executives, and Confidential Employees. B would be Conference with Real Property Negotiators.
You can skip that one, 1B, we did that one already, thank you.
B, we're taking off the...
Yeah, we did that.
You, okay, next.
C would be Conference with Legal Counsel Pending Litigation, City of Glendale Edel versus Camp Brothers Construction Incorporated, Edel, LASC Case Number 19STCV37455. D, Conference with Legal Counsel Pending Litigation, Jung versus City of Glendale, LASC Case BC688899. E, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, City Manager. F, Public Employment Attorneys. G, Conference with Legal Counsel Pending Litigation, City of Glendale versus Public Employment Relations Board, Court of Appeal, Second Appellate, District Case Number B304702, Public Employment Relations Board Decision Number 2694-M, Public Employment Relations Board Case Number LACE805M.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, do you expect to report out any of these items?
Mayor, do anticipate reporting on item 1C and 1F, and I would note for the record that I will be recusing myself from item 1G. That decision could potentially affect the law from a leader, Cassidy Whitmore, which is a source of income to me due to my spouse's income, so I will not be participating in that item, and that should be reflected in the minutes, Mr. Jimmy, thank you.
Thank you. We are recessed to closed session.